Good morning and welcome to the February ninth Cook County Board of Commissioners meeting. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, so we have one addition to the agenda. We need to set a public hearing and we will add that under Commissioner Concerns. And then, is there any other additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as to that nature?
Same. Okay, Commissioner Moll made the motion. Commissioner Severson seconded. Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, we have the con- let's go with public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak to public comment? We have a packed house, but they're very quiet today. Alright, would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Who would make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
And the second one up was Commissioner Gamble. Is anyone opposed? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Betty, you're up. I know we just fly through this.
If you've read the paperwork that I submitted for this discussion, I've done considerable work with Sheaf since the beginning of my time here and we've gone through various things. I recently had a meeting with Attorney, Commissioner Gamble, Attorney Swanson and Mr. Sheaf, which we did discuss this option and the point for the conservation partners legacy. And so, and so Attorney Swanson requested that the county commit to this if we're going to proceed with it. He wanted a commitment from the board to proceed with this option. And in checking with land exchange, he had several properties he'd known, but in going through the land exchange board requirements, it's, there are certain restrictions that they would never, ever allow exchange. So what is frustrating, he has 80 acres. He chose parcels that were smaller parcels dispersed within the county, lake shore parcels, which they would not exchange riparian for, non-riparian, certain things like that. So we did discuss the CPL grant and it opens in August. I've gotten information from Soil and Water Supervisor Perry Berg and I submitted information to the National Nature Conservancy Group, which reviewed the information I had. And they wanted to, my request was for them to go through them, but they considered it a good candidate in the conference call. We discussed this. They considered it to be a good candidate and it is something that they felt it should come from the county. So the grant period opens in August and is to apply for a grant and it would be, the decision and everything would be completed by January. Mr. Sheaf is looking for a quicker way to do this and because of public opinion, when we did try to, he did try to build up on this and to develop it, it, there was a lot of public outcry at that time. So, and the consensus was with some of the commissioners that it was something that they didn't want developed either and to keep that, the look up to the fluff pristine and it seemed to be the consensus. So in essence, I went for this option and it's just to see if there would be board approval to continue with it.
Okay, we'll start with discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Betty. So applying for this grant seems like a reasonable option, particularly for him. Because we're really not, so I have two questions. We're not under any obligation to purchase this land. Are we? No. So this is something we're trying to do to alleviate the burden that he is feeling because he has a piece of property that people really don't want him to develop and that he really doesn't have access to. He hasn't found reasonable access to, to develop anyway. So, so my question would be if the, if we apply for this grant and got it, would that make this property undevelopable forever? I mean, would that be part of the process?
Yes. You wouldn't be able to develop it. You would have to allow hunting or public access.
Okay.
And if there were ski trails, walking trails, that's acceptable also. I did check that out.
Because it's public?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is interesting. I've never really known the process by which you would do a conservation partner legacy. So I think it's interesting to look at it and see where it would go and I certainly wouldn't have any objection myself.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Betty. As I expressed before, for the detailed information coming before the board. It certainly informs us on this issue that's come before previous boards. And we've been trying to find what I would call a win-win situation in which that property is preserved and that we're more intentional in how we want to see land developed within the county. And also to Mr. Sheaf's concern and as to his opportunity to maximize revenue from his investment. And there are things that he could do to change that access to allow an opportunity for him to develop it, which we're trying to say, because we would rather not see that happen, let's look at alternatives. The alternatives we looked at was land swaps, but those given some restrictions on what we can and cannot do and land exchanges were prohibitive. And it just seemed like it's going to be a longer route trying to find out how we could find land that was county-owned land that could be exchanged for his land, this land that theoretically is landlocked. The monies that are available through the Outdoor Heritage Fund are intended for preservations of properties such as this. And the Nature Conservancy, of course, has millions of acres that it has, has worked with entities, private and nonprofit, to, and probably to be able to put land aside like this. The one, the one thing, when we look at our role as commissioners and what we've talked about in previous discussions when it comes to tax base, that it is our intention, and we've talked to the DNR about this, we've looked at drafting documentation that would be a policy on behalf of Cook County that would say we do not want to have any net loss relative to our tax base. And so when we make decisions relative to land, we need to be mindful of the fact that we have a small tax base with the majority of our properties being owned by government. And therefore, this goes against that intention. However, every decision is a decision that is made based upon a priority. And in this situation, preserving that aesthetic along that ridge and that piece of property with its unique qualities supersedes that tax base. So it's important, I think, just to point that out to commissioners that this would be a decision that is inconsistent with that intent, but consistent with a set of priorities when it comes to making decisions. And as you have indicated, I think that the revenue generated from that, this in the tax history, this is through 2009 to 2007, that you handed out this morning?
Yes.
Yeah, 2017. And so we were some, well, we're somewhere around $1,000.
Correct.
Yeah. And so making this decision, the county is not going to be putting out monies other than that 10% match, which we thought could be handled through, you know, donations that would come in and say, yes, we want to preserve that. So we have a funding source that's coming through the Outdoor Heritage Fund and I just see this as a good outcome. Given the requirements of that legacy grant program, Mr. Sheaf has to be in agreement that moving forward, this seems to be an option that he's receptive to and that the market, estimated market value or 10% of that, within 10% and 110%, that he would be acceptable. So that if we move forward on this, then we know that we have momentum so that should all of this go through, that we'd be able to button this up, so to speak.
Couple of other things I may add. The discussion initially too was the cost to update Old Ski Hole Road to accommodate any development, which was going to be considerable for the county. So that was another thing that was in that mix. And Mr. Sheaf, in our meeting, did indicate that this is something he would consider. And suggestions from the Nature Conservancy were that sometimes, an appraisal will be done, of course. And the difference between that 10% match could even be observed by Mr. Sheaf if he'd be acceptable to that with, or have the public donation. So there are different things to work through regarding that that would benefit Mr. Sheaf tax-wise, but...
And Madam Chair and Betty, the, so the intention in negotiating this as an option is that Mr. Sheaf just wants to know that the board would support this moving forward. And if so, then we would have momentum from both sides.
Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Betty, for this. This is one of those challenging county issues, kind of quandary. And you've come up with potentially a very creative solution. As Commissioner Gamble said, I'm not generally in favor of taking property off the tax rolls. However, it's, the county, we're also not really excited about the idea of providing access to this property for development, you know? So we're putting ourselves in a, in a challenging situation. And, and we've had a recent history of development along that hillside, which didn't turn out very well. And people looking up there would like to, it's further west. This is further west from there, but there's a scar there to the, just to the west of the Gunflint Trail. So anyway, if you're looking up from town, it'd be nice to keep that hillside clear. I think people expect that. And I know people who use that property now for cross-country skiing and just hiking. It would be nice to keep that, keep that available for them. So I would be supportive and I would, if, unless there's anybody else who would like to discuss this, I would make a motion to approve the application to the Conservation Partners Legacy Grant for the Sheaf property. Support.
Okay, we have a motion to second for the discussion. Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I rarely choose to be devil's advocate, but, and I know that this property is, it's surrounded by undevelopable property, which is why I would be in favor of it. But, but I, I wouldn't want to, you know, just as you did, Commissioner Moll, with the land use plan, I don't want to restrict us too far into the future and just, you know, blanket statements say that that land should never be developed. I feel that that's true now and that's sort of the will of people now is to not develop it. But there would be a day in 50 years where that land is wanting to be developed. However, it can't be because it's already protected by Forest Service land and so forth. So I'm in favor of this, but I just wanted to make that statement.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. That was, that was a concern of mine, Commissioner Severson, that who knows into peremptivity, you know, what we would not want to do. And so I had asked Betty with regard to that both. Any stipulation that's identified through the Outdoor Heritage Funds as to use of those monies? We often hear when grant opportunities come before us, like with the DNR, that if we buy some trail equipment or whatever, that the equipment has to be, have a serviceable life of 20 years. And so if there's a stipulation similar to that that says that you can only use this land for this purpose, with the Nature Conservancy, their involvement, as I understand it, is to facilitate a process because they see the guy that's consistent with their mission. So I think the only restrictions would come, given the fact that the money is coming from the Outdoor Heritage. And the restrictions relative to that, I think that the money, that that land can actually change hands under the auspices of the county, should we choose to do so. So I don't think it's entirely limiting as to, you know, what we would use it for. Given the fact that we've gone through the comprehensive plan relative to land use, I think when we look at this, that, and this land along with the land that was purchased for development for the economic opportunity up there with the zip line, those two things were things that are happening much similar to the discussion at the public meeting last night at the City Council relative to land use. That if we have a plan in place that's well-informed, then when these situations come up, we use that plan as a guideline as to what our intention is. When we don't, we end up being reactionary. And in this situation, and I know, I think, when Senator Bach and Dill came up, that they commented, it's always such a great drive because we can look at that hillside there undeveloped. And I was thinking in my mind, yeah, but, but we are vulnerable right now because we have two properties that will affect that, that we don't have in place something that necessarily can control that to the extent that we allow landowners' freedom and yet maintain what we, our intentions are relative to a comprehensive plan. So weighing all of that in the context of this, I think that it's more likely that we would preserve that consistent with our land management plan.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Gamble brings up a point. I just want clarification, Betty, maybe you can. If we purchase this property with legacy funds, can we sell that then? I was under the understanding we can't. This is county property that, and is deed restricted for usage from this point on?
There's no easement against the property itself, but it can't be developed in the future, ever.
Ever.
Correct.
Ever.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just hate that word, "ever."
Whatever.
Okay. Any opposition? I'm opposed. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Chair, respectfully, may I inquire as to your opposition?
I'm opposed because Mr. Sheaf was well aware of what he was purchasing when he purchased it. And so for us to make all these accommodations, this could come up again. And I know, I know there's been a lot of hard work and this is the best of all evils, but since the day this, the day this came before us, I said, you know what you bought. So...
Yeah, and if I may, Madam Chair, just to say that in the beginning of this, when it came and we were new commissioners at that time, that the alternative, if it's a matter of us versus them, so to speak, is that they can under the, under the provisions of the law force us to develop, you know, a cartway that would go in. And while we might end up being right on the basis of where we stand, that he knew that going into the purchase, he could use the position of the law to force us to have to develop that road access in there. And in that regard, that's why I felt it was very important to maintain a relationship that was open to alternatives so that we would get a...
I understand all that. I just, I'm a black and white kind of girl. It's a big green cloud over this matter.
Thank you.
Yep. Molly?
Yes.
Tennis court reconstruction.
Thank you. I was torn about whether to put this on the consent agenda, actually, because we've already addressed it back in December and in November. We have one contract with the, kind of the designer of the project, Colman. This is, now that bids have been received and the county awarded the bid to Durin Co. Levine, this contract is a project, a construction contract with Durin Co. Levine. It's, the contract itself is brief, but you'll see that the specs and plans are attached and integrated into the contract. So it's set up to protect the interests of the county. Let me know if you have any questions.
Commissioner Moll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Molly, nothing has changed since we talked about this in November, or December. And the county, we've decided to transfer some funds from one account to another to cover the shortfall on this and that's, that plan is still in place. Nothing has changed.
Not that I'm aware of here.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just two things. One is that, given our experience with contracts and different things and certainly you're mindful of that, this, this contract you feel is reflective of how we draft language that's protective of county interests.
Yeah, yeah, with recent construction-related litigation at the top of my mind, I definitely, that was...
Yeah, and I think it's important for the public, you know, to be aware of that. The other thing I would say is that it used to be, maybe someplace in history, that our grandfathers reached across a fence and shook hands and it was a gentleman's agreement and they knew that they would follow through on things. And the contractor that we're working at facilitating this with is that kind of gentleman. So while we have the, while we do the due diligence relative to the contract, we also have a relationship with an individual that has demonstrated in the past that he is a man of his word. And that was demonstrated in the workshop that was done before the Tennis Association and Community Center Board, when he had done a project in Wisconsin in a tennis court and it started to crack up early and he flew out and he made it, made it right. And when I asked him the question, what was the impetus for you to correct it? He said, my personal integrity, which I thought was what we would like to hear more often. So, thank you.
Can I get through my commissioner before I get to you? Thanks, Brady. Commissioner Storley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So it looks like that he will have the work completed by July 31st. That's the agreement?
That's the project completion date. And Brady and I were conversing about what the grant requires. I think the grant would allow one more month or, is that right?
There's a blizzard?
September 30th. I'm not sure. But at any rate, yes, this contract requires completion by July 31st and there is room for the parties to agree to extend that if required. But that would allow the tennis courts to be done before Fisherman's Picnic.
Yeah.
Tournament.
That's a big deal.
Everyone's interested in, so...
Given the fact that we do have sometimes unruly weather, you know, that could maybe postpone it a little bit longer, but let's hope not. Thank you.
Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions. I just want to say I'm excited that this is happening. And in a way, I'm excited about what just happened because it informed this contract. And so I'm grateful for that too.
Brady?
Just the contract amount, because I think it still says the 126,300. And I think that was the bid amount.
Okay.
And I think we were advised that we didn't want to accept the second part, the 5,000, because we're paying Colman to oversee the construction. So I think what we actually approved in November was the 121,300. We took out this, you had a part one and part two of this bid and we didn't accept part two.
So the motion would be for 121,300?
Yeah.
Okay. So we would need a motion to authorize the contract as amended to 121,300?
Okay. Commissioner Gamble?
Make that motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Commissioner Storley? Any further discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. There you go, Frankie. You guys made Frankie smile today.
Thank you, Frankie.
Your hard work, Frankie. Alright, employee concerns, commissioner concerns. Do we have any reports, notes, or updates? Commissioner Severson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to comment on the meeting that was held at City Hall last night. It was a very well-done public hearing, packed hall, although it's a small space. And, and just wondered as a question when we might, I think it would be, makes sense for us to put it on our agenda, I think, to talk about our, our part in this. There were a few members from the room who were from other parts of the county, of course, and wanted to know how our ordinances would affect something like this.
Our ordinances are currently very similar to the city's ordinances. And it is already on the agenda for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Since we just upgraded our land use guide, it makes sense for us to continue. And we had said during the land use guide, because a lot of times during that committee, people said, we got to do this, we got to do this. And none of that was the land use guide. That was our ordinances and how they currently stand. So we had made a promise as the committee and Planning and Zoning Office that we would then, once the land use guide was completed, review our ordinances and make sure that they are compatible with each other. So tomorrow night is the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting at 5:00 PM in this room.
Okay.
And on it is the land use guide update. And we won't be specifically talking about any specific projects, but we will be talking about our current ordinances and how we move forward and how the look of the county is. So, Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One thing, and I, it was two hours of comments, you know, that was received by the public. And I did want to qualify just a context for this process. And that is, excuse me, and I've been a part of that in other communities where when things start happening, that there's a segment of the society or the public that has an aversion to a potential direction of its county, community, township, city, that when the public comes out and speaks out against it, there are, it is, it is the rule of law. It's ordinances, it's statutes that set the structure under which a community will develop. And when you have a large response to a potential decision that the public is opposed to, that there's a consensus of agreement as to we don't want something. And in my experience, when the public comes out and says, we don't want this, the way that we prevent that is to create a structure that identifies what we don't want. But it also, in doing so, identifies within that structure what we can do. And so I have found that communities that are opposed to a law that would be inclusive of everyone within that community, not just the people, in this case, the Dollar General store, but everybody within the community would have to live within the context of that defined law. That oftentimes, they will advocate for no law simply because they don't want the law to govern them. They want it to govern somebody else. And that will be the challenge moving forward. You know what I'm saying? And, and so in the experience that I've had previous, the, the community did not want developers coming in and cutting up Lake Shore and selling it, subdividing it. And the only way you could do that was to establish zoning laws. But the community did not want to live under those laws themselves, so they chose not to do anything. So then consequently it happened. And my point is, I think it's important, and this is what I would have, you know, qualified last night, is understand as we move forward and define what it is we want to live under, that we all live under that structure. And I think that's, it's a healthy thing because these kinds of things serve as an igniter for, you know, public participation in governance. It just realize that whatever we define, we all respond. Yeah.
And it's not at all easy, you know, if we, of course, if we just changed ordinance and said, no buildings over a certain square foot, well, then our IGA wouldn't have been built. Our Johnsons would not have been built.
I would've.
Yeah. So, and, and not everybody is opposed to this idea that's happening. There are people that support it. It's just that we need to take a kind and considerate look at it, as Commissioner Gamble said. And I'm the optimist here and hate to say what we don't want. So I'll do the flip of Gary and we're going to take a look at what we do want to see. And that's what the land use guide did, was give us a look at the future, what we do want to see. So we'll, we'll take a focus on it. And I don't know that we'll accomplish much on it at the Planning and Zoning, but it's the next step from our land use guide, so...
And it's better we ask the question now.
Yeah.
Before that application comes to us. So we can have thought it through as opposed to reacting.
Right. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And just... And just, excuse me, on that point that I had contacted Ely because Ely has a Dollar General, and they also have a family Dollar, and then they have a Shopko. And it was interesting because I asked the Planning and Zoning Administrator for the city of Ely, what was the process like? He says, a very quick process, two to three months. We did not know it was a Dollar General store until the permit was applied for the sign. So this is one of those situations, if we don't have in place, whether it's a contract, whether it's an ordinance, something that defines what we, you know, you know, the guidelines for how we develop, that it was a developer basically saying, we have an empty building. It's been sitting there. We're losing tax revenue, potentially by having a contributor to the community. So we've bought it, we've got somebody that's interested. Are you willing to, yeah, sell it? Let's go with this. And so the financial was attractive, but they didn't realize, you know, who the entity was until the sign was applied. And we just want to be there, as, you know, Commissioner Mo suggested, in the front end to be aware and to know so that we're intentional in those kinds of decisions.
All right, well, thank you. As always, you guys are wonderful and very respectful. So this is, this is nice to have the discussion. And I went to the Planning and Zoning meeting for the City Hall, and it was a great meeting. They did a very good job of addressing the public. So, thank you.
WTIP, Commissioner Mo?
Madam Chair, yes, I'm available. But before I, we have, we can announce events here.
Yeah.
On the 18th of February, Thursday, you will see one of, at least one of your county commissioners riding a donkey.
On a donkey?
Several of our esteemed staff in a fundraiser for the Cook County High School band. It's six o'clock, dinner, seven o'clock, show starts. And we'll be taking on the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, and we're going to smoke up.
What are you going to do on the donkey?
We have, it's a basketball game.
That's right, donkey type.
Yes, you have to, and...
You can help Frank out and hop on a donkey.
Yeah, right. And then the second game is the, is the school faculty against the seniors. And there'll be a championship, of course, which we will be in. So come out and enjoy the show and support the high school band. That's the, again, the 18th, seven o'clock.
And on a positive note, we'll do anniversaries. Tim Nelson, Planning and Zoning, has been here 17 years. Tim Whites, who's probably out in our lobby right now. It says three years, but we all know he retired and came back, so...
Oh, is he?
Yeah, he came back when we added the security. So we'd like to doubly thank him. And Joyce Drewlard, 15 years in our recorders office. So then we have correspondence. Is there any comment on correspondence? Okay. And Jeff did talk to Virginia. She is in a meeting right now, and we obviously aren't going to take an hour-long break. We will have to reschedule her to give us an update on C-Clip. Commissioner Campbell?
Just a comment on the 1% local option sales tax center. We get that periodically. There is an intention to try to create a ceiling on the state general tax, meaning that for small businesses that are seasonally affected, that $500,000, the first $500,000 would be exempt. And that would take pressure off of seasonal small businesses in especially, you know, small counties where, and we, it was brought up, you know, last night.
And not just seasonal, right?
Pardon?
Not just seasonal?
Well, it would, it would be, it's the intent...
In seasonal economies.
Yeah.
It would benefit everyone. It would just especially benefit...
Yeah. The emphasis for it was recognizing that business is seasonal in some regards. And that was brought up by Joints, you know, last evening. And we're certainly aware of that. And how that connects with the 1% local option here is that we have seven months, which would be considered to be the off-season, and five months that are our heavy season. That, that five months generates almost four times as much revenue as those seven months. So that reinforces the fact that it is significant, the revenue that's generated. And I think it's imperative that the state be mindful of that impact on small businesses. And as we see competition, and we certainly, there was a lot of discussion last night on that, and a lot of shops closing up, it's because it's just, it's hard to make a go at. So I think that would be a good thing to create that initial exemption. And so if you're talking to any of our representatives when we're done at the legislative session, I would just underscore supporting that.
Okay, and we did have one other item that was added, which was setting a public hearing for February 23rd at 10:00 AM. This didn't make it into the packet on time, but it's fine for us to take action on setting a public hearing. So we do this every year. It's for deed. Brady, you want to give us a little brief?
Yeah, so this, this would be for the application, the housing application, that we actually approved them, a EOA to go ahead and make the application back in November. And then Scott informed us we have to hold the public hearing prior to sending the final application in. So this would be that public hearing. And it would have to be on the 23rd in order to get our notice in the paper and have the statutory time period. So if you approve that today, we'll get the notice in and hold the hearing on the 23rd.
Motion approved.
Commissioner Campbell, is the motion, do I have a second? By Commissioner Mo? Any discussion? Any opposition? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. With that, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So Madam Chair, just to repoint, so C-Clip...
Will be rescheduled.
Rescheduled. And Virginia knows that, does she, she's in transit here or something?
She's in a meeting right now.
Okay.
Yeah, so we'll let her know.
Okay, sure.
Okay, we are adjourned. This is neck time.